And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Heidecker, who's going to introduce our student musicians.
Okay. We just want to say thank you to these lovely male musicians for coming. We have Alejandra Duran, Brenda Cruz, Gar Kate Quam, Rudy Weitz, Ariyan Marshall, Connor House, and Will Saleo.
Again, these are members of the
Thank you.
State of Oregon State High School.
Yes. The directorship is Julie Brugni, but she's not there tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. We do have an action coming out of executive session. So before we have our district happenings, from Mrs. Heidecker. Honored to take a motion for Resolution 2015 BOE 32. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby establishes the full-time position of Assistant Director of Facilities Two in a competitive class of civil service.
Good work. Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to comment on this. I'm going to vote no on this resolution. I believe that our staff does a great job and they're very good at what they do. I think that the high school is a $137 million project, and I think we'd be better served with a formal owner's representative.
Any other discussion, comments? Well, I would like to say, I've worked very closely with Mr. Clever for five years. He's been involved with us since the inception of the project, and I think he probably is more aware of the vagaries of our buildings than anybody else would be. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? The motion carries. Okay. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to District Happenings. I'm sorry, what? Oh, I thought we were going to have that as a consent agenda. I'd be happy to do that. Also, Resolution 2015 P-66, Professional Personnel. Be resolved upon recommendation of Dr. Paul J. Pedalino, Superintendent of Schools, that the following be approved by the Board of Education. Emily Flossley, Probationary Acquaintment in the Academic Tenure Area of Elementary Step 1B, with an annual salary of $52,781 pro rata, effective October 22, 2015, with the probationary period ending October 21, 2019, except to the extent required by the Section 3012D of Education Law. Initial certification, childhood education, grades B6. Honored to take a motion?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of P-66, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And now, we'll move on to Mrs. Heidecker with District Happenings.
All right. Before we start the video, I just want to draw your attention to your board packets. This one's success story goes nicely with the feature, which is all about STEM skills and science. And our success story is about a young woman who works for the Center for Food Safety and works with protecting pollinator species. So it's pretty interesting. She's a 2005 graduate, and she's down there in DC doing important things. So in the video, just a quick peek at some of the science-related happenings at the high school, and then today at Miller and Crosby, the specials that are going on.
For the science research course at the high school, we had to find a topic that interested us, and then try to find a professor that could help us conduct an experiment with it. And I had found a transcranial direct current stimulation. And I found that Dr. Bates's name was in a lot of articles I read about it. So I just sent him an email and that, and he responded, and we got to talking, and eventually I went down for a conference that he was hosting, and that was when I first met him.
Thanks to his science research course with MJ Rice, Evan was able to secure a summer internship with Marv Vixen, a scientist who's currently studying transcranial direct current stimulation. Thanks to Kingston High School's new 3D printer, Evan was able to continue his research at school and create a 3D model of his brain.
That is a bite-sized, 3D-printed model of my brain from MRI scan I had done. I segmented it in each direction so that only my brain matter would print out. And I converted it to a 3D model out of the 2D slices and printed it like this, and it exactly reflects my brain size.
Hello, my name is Joshua Shaffron, and I'm a junior at Kingston High School. This past summer, I spent three days in Boston, Massachusetts, at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, at a three-day conference for the National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists.
Joshua received an award at the conference, but the real payoff is in how it's shaped his future goals.
At the conference, I heard from many of the experts in the fields of science and technology, including Kelly Greiner and Pete Kamen, others, other top professionals, and they inspired me to pursue robotics engineering. I want to go to either MIT or Caltech as my dream colleges and pursue a career in robotics engineering.
Students at Crosby Elementary and Miller Middle School were able to build an arch, watch a 3D printer channel, participate in a friction raceway, and even take dance instructions from a humanoid robot, thanks to a generous donation from the Crosby and Miller parent-teacher organizations.
I can see the robot. The robot. The robot. I mean, your clothes, that was very amazing, and your words very neat.
Students explored Newton's third law of motion with a classic physics display, and used a bike to turn their kinetic energy into electricity right before their eyes.
So tonight, I have the young man who makes these videos possible. He's running all around, covering stuff, the president of KHSV, Sam Fur. Like, working with professionals is wonderful, and actually, we were outside, and the orchestra was playing, and he just jumped on and started playing the cello, too. Thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And one more thing.
Yes.
I wanted to introduce MJ Reese. She is a science teacher who teaches that awesome course where the student was making the brain, and she encourages them to reach out to professors like the young man, and he just emailed this guy and was able to create a relationship.
It's an amazing course. It's just, it's a very small course, because it's very labor-intensive. They can just come in, and there's no, like, I don't teach in front of them, I support them in whatever their research and their dream is, and then they go out, they read science peer-reviewed journals, then out of that, they find authors, and then they reach out to those mentors. So I just want to let you guys know that it's an amazing course. It almost closed down last year, so we had a little bit of a stumble, but this year it got reinstated by Kirk, and so I'm really excited. We have 10 students in the class, and we're moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay. And now, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Julie Linton for Principal's Update from Jay Watson, Bailey.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm not sure I can dance like a robot, and I definitely don't have the three-leafed skin on my brain, but we definitely will see some correlations this evening. We'd like to share some of the good things that are going on at Bailey Middle School, and we'd like to take a few moments to talk about our community partnerships and our extended learning opportunities. And we'll start with the community partnerships. It sounds cliche, we've heard it for many, many years, it really does, it truly does take a village to raise a child, especially more than ever nowadays, where everyone has to be working in connection with one another, and especially if we want our students to be productive members of society, we have to almost think of this as we would learn a foreign language, a world language, we need to immerse our students into the community. So some of our community partnerships, we work with our bruder hop, we invite them into our schools at least once a year, working with the Breaking the Cycle program, many of you are familiar with that. We really stress the resolution of conflicts. At middle level, the word "fair" is a big word, that is huge to middle school students, and we are always talking to our students about how to resolve those conflicts. They're going to find conflicts no matter where they go, whether it's in the cafeteria, lunchroom, on the playground, in a classroom, when they are employed 20 years from now in their jobs, and they need to know a productive way to resolve those conflicts. We are also very proud that we can support Tay Fisher's Fundamental Basketball Camp. As you know, Tay was a Bailey student before he moved on to the high school, and then on to Sienna, and now with the Harlem Globetrotters. And we always support a student for his Fundamental Basketball Camp, one, because of his motto of sweat plus sacrifice equals success. And Tay will be the first one to tell you that he really didn't know where he was going in middle school, and it was his middle school teachers who kind of got him on that right path and helped him to be the person that he is today. He always remembers our students, he comes back a couple of times a year, just sitting with our students, talking to our students, and is always, always talking about the hard work, that it's not just going to be an overnight-type thing, that you have to work hard, but that the good success will come. We have a new partnership this year, thanks to Mrs. Bonville, with our Y. Jody Petrazak and Heidi Kerschner came and met with us probably during the summer, and we talked about doing something during our activity period, and then after that, for our fifth graders. Something a little bit to help them with the transition, get to know one another a little bit better, coming from our different feeder elementary schools. That didn't really take off. We only had nine students who were interested, and we think maybe because it was very similar to what we run during our activity period. So, we met with Jody a couple of weeks ago, and before we could even talk about, okay, what else could we do, is there something we could do during the day, Jody suggested that they have Camp Seawakamano, just about not even half an hour from our campus. And could we take all of our fifth-grade teams to Camp Seawakamano, decide on the last week of October, and they'll do some kind of cooperative games, they will be doing the Low Growth Initiative, and thankfully, this is all paid for through a Y grant, so it's all free for all of our students. So starting next week, and we're hoping that the good weather holds out, each team will go either in the morning or the afternoon for a couple of hours, and with their teachers and with other members of our school community, and they will work cooperatively with one another. And it's interesting, because many of our students will see one another in a classroom. I can be sitting next to Mrs. Lobianca, who doesn't say a word in math class, but all of a sudden, I see her on a cable two feet off the ground, and I have to figure out how I'm going to get from one side to the other, her hand is there, reaching out to help me. So they form partnerships that they would never expect. And the thing that's really cool about this, their teachers are right there with them. So many of our kids just think that, I think, we all live in our classrooms 24/7, that we never come out, so they see us, their educators, their teachers, in a totally different light. So we're really excited about this program next week. We also have a partnership with our local Boys and Girls Club, we are always in contact with Joe Fay. Thanks to our Kingston PBA, they always support a table for our school at the Steak and Burger, which is coming up next week. Officer Waltman, our school resource officer, is also a member of the board from there, and they are always supporting what we do at school, asking us, can you, if we can supply some books for them, what is the homework, how else can we help you to make sure that these kids are successful. But then we thought, basically after our DITC review with District Oversight last year, we really needed to beef up our extended learning opportunities. We took the tenants, and from the tenants, from our review, we had, we looked at tenant two specifically, leader practices, because we felt not only did this just hit tenant two, but it hit tenants three, four, five, and six. The family partnerships, the social-emotional piece, curriculum, teacher practices, and we really wanted to focus on well-being and academic success for our students. Middle school's a time where young adolescents are learning who they are going to be when they grow up. They don't quite know that yet, but they really are truly forming their characters. What they're learning now is who they're going to be five, 10, 15 years down the road, and we know without that social-emotional piece in place, the academics don't fall into place. So we really wanted to focus on something that would address the social-emotional and the academics. The needs statement from our DITC review last February said that our extended learning program really didn't provide enough depth or alignment to be successful and to address our students' immediate needs, and we didn't have any data really collected from that, which is true. We collect data for every type of assessment we can imagine, down to formative assessments, how many kids had thumbs up, thumbs down in a class, but we really had no data supporting what we do once that bell rings at 2:35, or, excuse me, 2:25 for our after-school activity period. So we came up with a very ambitious and very lengthy, smart goal. We would like that at least 80% of our students to participate in at least one extended learning opportunity. We figured we'd start small, and we could add from there. We also don't want to overwhelm students, especially our fifth graders coming in, this is their first opportunity where they can participate in extracurricular activities, such as we have at the middle level. A lot of them would like to be in five, six, seven clubs. We really tell them, just kind of limit it to one, maybe two, especially as they're getting started. So we would like to see at least 80% of our student population involved in at least one extended learning time opportunity, with 75% of those students improving their reading scores by at least 40 percent, or 40 points, excuse me, and at least 75% of our students, 70% of our students in our identified subgroups improving their reading scores by at least 50 points. And that would be measured by our STAR assessment that we give every fall, and then compare that to their post-assessment in the spring of next year. We also want to look at school attendance rate, and we also want to reduce the number of referrals, because we believe all of this is tied together. As a comparison, last year, our attendance rate was 94.12%. So the 95%, that's definitely within target range for us. Reducing the number of disciplinary referrals by 5%, that would be about 35 referrals. And we thought this year, just to count the actual number of referrals, and then, as the years go by, then we can start really breaking it out into specifically the number of students, how many for each student, where the location might be, specific times, and so on. And that's some of the things we'll do as we work through our PBIS program as well. Again, in comparison, last year, there were 229 students who received a total of 704 referrals. So that is definitely, again, within target range. The 229 students was approximately 22% of our student population. So our action steps, we would like to involve at least five community organizations in an extended learning opportunity for our students. We would also, obviously, like to keep track of the data, just simply attendance data. And to do this, thanks to one of our secretaries, we've set up an attendance for activity period using Office 365, where the teachers can go in and click as a drop-down menu to math, science, English, whatever class the students stayed for. So now, we will have specific data on where those students stayed, what classes, and then we will hopefully be able to track, is it making a difference with their academics, with attendance, and with behavior. And obviously, for the purposes of monitoring, we need to talk to our kids. Activity period is there for the kids, we need to talk to our students, we need to find out what they really want. Is what we have planned right now, what they really need, is there something else that we can add to that program? So we're going to start with our obvious. We do have activity period, thankfully, at the middle level is built in, for the most part, to our school day. During activity period, our students can receive extra help from their teachers, quiet place where they can complete their homework, and they can participate in extracurricular clubs. And as you see, we have a number and a wide, wide variety of extracurricular activities, where many of them are also service learning projects, such as Empty Bowls, Helping Hands, National Junior Honor Society. Fashion Club is probably one of our largest clubs, where the kids just love that, where they get to come up and show off and do a fashion show at the end of the year. So there's a number of different activities for pretty much anything that a student wants. We also encourage students, if we don't have a club for an activity or a hobby that you like, an interest you have, come see us, we will find someone to help you start that club. But we also have Girls Inc. through the Y. Anik Dangelo is running this on Tuesdays with our girls, we have approximately 20 girls participating, and again, a major focus, STEM, the math and science, but it's also a place where girls can just meet with girls to discuss issues that are affecting girls. They don't have to worry about the boys being around them at that time. So they're pretty much free to say, you don't have to feel that the boys are going to make fun of them or kind of giggle or laugh for different things that are going on. But it also deals with social-emotional, sports participation, healthy well-being. New program we have this year, Girls on the Run. And this started last year, I believe, at Edson. Dawn Rivette, a teacher over at Edson, was running this. We have a few fifth graders who wanted to continue, so she said she would do this, she comes over and picks them up on Tuesdays and Fridays, and they are just an absolute delight to be around. When you open your windows and hear them out there running around, you can just hear the squeals of delight. It also is a curriculum-based project for the students, but it also integrates running. And you can see where the joy and optimism, this is just a perfect picture of the girls out there, as they're just constantly, they just go around in that circle out by, between Edson and Bailey, and they are just running and having the best of times. They're down at the track as well, down at Deets, and physical, emotional, and spiritual, again, working on that emotional well-being. And they're going to be doing a 5K in New Paltz, I think it's the first Saturday in November. We have tech wizards. We've had tech wizards in the past. Usually, we'd have maybe five, six, seven students who attend. This year, we had 39 students show up for the first meeting, and then after that, we had pretty much consistently 20 students who were there. And again, mostly the STEM fields, and they have adult mentors, and we have a great, it's Allison Reedy, who from Cornell Cooperative Extension, who was running this with our students, and it's through project-based learning. Our students have come up with their class rules and possible topics. And again, many of the things that we would expect from Bailey Middle School, be respectful, be kind, they know our motto, they know our expectations, so I was glad to see that. They're working with Kiva planks. And Kiva planks seem to be the new in thing, the new Legos, the new building blocks. Kiva planks are a quarter inch by three-quarter inches by four and a half inches. They're all the exact same, and they can just build any kind of structure that they would like. Actually, if you Google Kiva planks, you see a number of different structures that are seven, eight, 10 feet tall, even higher than that. Many museums now have actual exhibits, hands-on exhibits for this, but you can see the kids as they're trying to decide what they're going to build with the Kiva planks. And it's also giving the kids a chance to work together, where for the most part, there's very few jobs these days where you're working in isolation, you're working together. Even as educators, it used to be, I kind of date myself here, where you go in, close the door, teach your class, and that's all you worried about. Everything now is collaboration. So it's teaching our kids the skills to communicate, collaborate with one another, and they have a great time. Our newest program is the, what we call the LLL, Life, Learning, and Language. And this was because of the need of our ESL students. Miss Hunt, one of our ESL teachers contacted the person from Leves, who made contact with Wendy Brisley, who is the coordinator of the Young Rhinebeck Program, which is also what LLL is called in Rhinebeck, a transfer of Livingston Elementary School. For our ESL students, so they have a chance to get some extra help, to feel the connection between their school and their community, to feel a connection with one another, and just to kind of nurture their sense of belonging. And it's not just for the student, but also to involve the families. We had hoped for 15 students, we have nine students who are signed up, actually, I believe it'll be 10 as of tomorrow, and they attend twice weekly on Mondays and Thursdays, they stay after our activity period, so they start at 3:05. And they're there with Bard tutors who come in to help them in small groups, so they'll do some community building, they'll do some small group work, whether it's homework help, specific math skills, reading skills. Can you see some of our students there? As they're building community. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Hunt, one of our ESL teachers at Bailey Middle School.
I just wanted to thank the board administrators for supporting the program. I definitely think public school is all about community, and when we support, when we support our ENL ESL families and their students, we just make them feel that much more a part of our community. So I thank you, and I'm sure on behalf of their families, you're speaking for them. I thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. And hopefully, our evidence of impact by providing these more structured activities and including the community, we are hoping for increased student achievement academically, an increased attendance policy, and fewer disciplinary referrals, because we do, again, believe that it's not just in isolation, all of those work together. If the kids feel good about themselves, they're going to feel good about being in school, being in class, they're going to succeed academically, and so on. So thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the flight? Mr. Shaughnessy, and then Reverend Costin.
So what is a, what exactly is a, an extended learning opportunity, where you said the goal is to have at least one extended learning opportunity? What is that?
We're looking at that as beyond our school day, when our first dismissal is at 2:24, so that the students stay during that activity period or beyond.
Now, but for how, what is the frequency? Is it just?
That's what we would like to track, to see where the students are staying. So are they staying, many of our students, especially our fifth graders, they love activity period, they will stay four days a week to do their homework, just to get some extra help with their teachers, just have a quiet place to sit and read. So there's a number of different things, and that's what we want to track some of the data for.
Reverend Costin.
I want to commend you on the amount of activities and clubs you have.
It's a popular place.
Certainly keep you busy. But my question is, what is a car club? I'm just curious to know. What does that do?
A fifth grade voice came to me and said, "We want to do a car club." And I said the exact same thing, "What is that? What's about cars?" And I said, "What about cars?" And they said they really just wanted to sit and to look at different cars, to think about motors, what they could do. I said, "I think I have the person for you." I went to one of our seventh-grade social studies teachers, he said, "Absolutely." So he's pulled up different designs of motors that their kids are going to talk about, he's gotten some car magazines, so they're practicing their literacy skills. So there's a number of different things, but again, just kids, boys just wanting to talk about cars.
Just boys or is it girls?
It can be girls as well, but right now, it's the boys who are interested. Kind of goes along with, last year, we had the, the kids wanted a singing club, and I said, "We kind of have that, it's chorus." And they're like, "Oh, no, this is for people who can't sing." I said, "Okay."
The bad answer.
I agree with Reverend Costin, I just want to, there are a lot of great opportunities, and it's really exciting. So I actually have two questions. How often do these, do the more formal clubs meet?
Usually they meet, like, the ones, the extracurricular activities, like yearbook and so on, usually they are once every two weeks, some are once a month, depending, but for the most part, it's once every two weeks, some even once a week.
Okay. And when you, you talked about an exit survey?
Yes.
Will you, will you serve students who stay after and, or stay for activity period and students who don't?
All the students.
Okay. So just, I'm sure you know this, I mean, one issue that I hear a lot about is the late buses and how the kids have to sit in the cafeteria or the auditorium or wherever for up to 40 or 50 minutes. And I know that that's a difficult, I'm sure that's a difficult time for people who are monitoring that situation, but I think that's important feedback for the administration as, you know, some But I think that's important feedback for the administration as, you know, something to think about. If this is something that we, that we value, then that's a, that's a concern.
Absolutely, and it is a concern that a lot of students don't, especially if they have some of the longer bus rides, or if their bus comes in later, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, because I wanted to follow up and thank you. It was really entertaining to see. I think the last meeting or the meeting before, when we had the program, I forget the name of it.
Wilder.
I was going to say Rare earth, but that's a Dan. Wilder.
That's an old band.
I was glad, and I had brought that up and asked, would Bailey have that opportunity? So I'm really glad and thank you to the Y and thank you to Ms. Bonville. I'm excited for our fifth graders to get out and have that opportunity.
That's great. The teachers are looking forward to it, the kids are really looking forward to it.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Ms. Guido.
How do you recruit kids for the clubs? Or how, is it on the announcements? I mean, how are they made aware?
For some of the, if, just for example, like the car club, if they want to join, you know, have that club, we will try to do as much as we can to get that club in, in for the students. But we put them on the announcements during the day. The announcements are also posted online, and they're posted in our cafeteria every day as well.
Just wondering if the students that have to attend Bailey and tell me, there's never anything for them to do.
It's the Bailey down the street.
Now I can refer them to the cafeteria.
Can I comment?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Linton. I appreciate you coming and making your presentation. I just want to just point out also to the board and think this is, there's a language that I think I've been talking to the board about, that we are, we are all speaking now, and it's about the DTSD, and it's about, you know, it's kind of a new language, and I appreciate that you have taken your presentation and your program and really tied it to the way we're, the way we're speaking now, when we look at DTSD and we look at our tenants. And, you know, I think that's how we're really organizing our district and really trying to make, make our moves forward. And to, to take your, your extended learning opportunities and your extracurricular activities and to measure them and to see how are they helping us really move forward, not only just so students have something to do, but how, how are we aligning them to what we're trying to do big-picture wise? So I appreciate that, and it's great the way you communicated that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So now we've reached the portion of our meeting where we welcome public comment. If you'd like to address the board, please step forward to the microphone and speak directly into the microphone so that people at home can hear you too. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point? You're limited to two minutes. Our board clerk will let you know when you're approaching at two minutes. Thank you very much.
Two minutes. Happy Halloween time. As the wrath of God to be feared upon our genocided harvest. Every bully has one fear, being slipped organic meals. Every wayward has one fear, being slipped organic meals. Why are the ghost god corporations of Halloween time never questioned? Why is the god fire on the horizon not bursting the satellites into popcorn? How dare you answer questions? It's your place to give the right answers, and if you miss the comma, why are questions trick, trick questions? When I asked these questions of the head of the Board of Education at City Hall, the reply was, ah-ho, ah-ho, ah-ho! Textbooks? They were dinosaur before you know it! That wasn't the question, sir. Why have textbooks always been designed to be boring? Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Okay. And moving along, I'd like to turn over the board to the superintendent for his report.
Okay. I have a very brief report tonight. Actually, I'm going to hand it over to KSQ and BBL in one second, but first, I do, the biggest part of my report is to make an announcement that we will be, there's a, there's a calendar mistake, so I wanted to make sure that we were aware of the calendar error with the emergency go-home drill, and I want to make sure parents were aware. We did put out a press release, it is on the website. We originally had our emergency go-home drill as November 4th. It's not, it's November 5th, which means, sorry. It's my father. Thought I turned that off. So it is November 5th, so students will be leaving 15 minutes earlier, early those two days. But that one day, I'm sorry, November 5th, my father calling me in the middle of my report, kind of threw me off there, one day. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And now, before anybody else calls me, I'm going to turn it over to KSQ and BBL.
We're here to do our monthly summary update for the Kingston High School project. We're going to just do it a little bit differently. So today, we're going to start with an update on the pre-construction and the design updates. Mike, will you lead?
Good evening, everyone. So I want to talk a little bit about the pre-construction and the design updates that we've been working hand-in-hand with Scott and the rest of the KSQ team. There's a couple of major categories that are still in the design SED phase, the Salzman interior fit-up package that went to State Ed in the end of January 2015. State Ed has reported to KSQ that they're looking now at mid-December as their initial review period. Review commencement of the mechanical portion of the job. State Ed has provided the architectural comments, KSQ's addressed them all. We submitted them back to the state based on the latest information. And not knowing really how long they're going to take with their review period, we're projecting toward the end of February, where we'd have some sort of approval from State Ed, to be able then to put the bow on the balance of the bid packages for that portion of the job, get them out to the street to obtain bids, and then make some more recommendations to the board in the April 2016 period. So that's where we are with the interior fit-up package with State Ed. We did submit as a team the main heating system. State Ed took an initial review of that. That went into State Ed end of August. They determined that it was a Level 2 project. Level 1 would mean we'd get a quicker review. Level 2, they went through it all, and basically, it's the mechanical portion that dictates how they want to review the job or how to, how they categorize it. That timeframe, based on the SED websites, they're looking at 40, 42 weeks, so that's pushing us out to the tail end of spring before we get a stated approval, and then again, put those packages together to go out and for public bid. We talked a little bit about it amongst us, ourselves as a team, and our goal was always about to do some work abatement-wise in the summer periods when the kids aren't in school. So now we're taking a sidestep to look at what portion of that work can we put out as a separate abatement package? That timeframe for stated review is much quicker, and that would put us in a position to bid, award, and start some work in the summer of 2016. The main renovation, the balance of the package, it's being wrapped up, design-wise, by the KSQ team. We are anticipating toward the end of the year, beginning of the year, to have those documents. Then our team at BBL will start looking at it, putting together some estimate values, and then comparing that to the project budget we've established to make sure we're on track overall, fiscally, for the, for the referendum. State Ed funding will help dictate the regeneration of available, State Ed requirements will help dictate the regeneration of available funds, and from that, we can start looking at the, the second phase of the project for those bid packages once those funds regenerate. And we develop our bid packages accordingly, based on that information. Behind the scenes, we're continuing to review the documents that are in State Ed, in particular the fit-up package, our office and Scott's team, and we're constantly making that as complete as possible in preparation for when we want to go out in the streets to bid. We're reevaluating the estimate that we prepared, because the drawings are progressing. Some things come in, some things go out, so we want to get as realistic a number as we can going into bid day. We are, we have been developing our bidders matrix, and it's just how we've broken out the jobs and by the categories. So we constantly talk to bidders, keeping them appraised that State Ed is looking at this timeframe, we expect this package out, type of scope of work, constantly just trying to draw interest in the market, so they're prepared that this important job will be out toward the early part of the winter timeframe. And we're continuing to track State Ed and doing any adjustments we need on our end for the overall schedule and how that relates to our bid packages and our milestone dates for everything from the Salzman buildings to turnover in the 2018 period. And that's the pre-con. Robin's going to have all the cool pictures for the board to take a place.
Just to update what's been going on on campus, to this point, the main boiler room abatement package, as you all know, is all done now. We've got closeouts, final consents of surety, so we're just finalizing the payment to the contractor. And the swimming pool repair package is, is also complete, and we're just proceeding with those closeouts. The fieldhouse updates. Mechanical piping at the lower level is, you know, we're putting in all of the piping, all of the flooring that where we've had to trench out, that's been all repoured with concrete. They're starting to put up the new partition walls that'll delineate the lower locker room, boys locker room and girls locker room. So the lower level is, is proceeding as expected. The demolition of the south end structure has begun with the roofing and the interior work, along with the removal of the windows and the exterior. Now, as you probably remember from being here a month ago, the demolition is, is for the south addition, has been held up due to the requirement to provide bracing and shoring on the existing south wall of the gymnasium itself. Prior to our removing the existing addition, we have to have that braced, and the contractors are underway getting that done. It's been engineered to this point. It's quite involved. It includes additional work in the truss system itself, as well as bracing, vertical bracing across that entire wall, because it's not a structural wall, so if there's any wind load, once the existing addition is down, it could be destabilized. Once that is in place, then we can finalize, take the balance of the addition that's there off, and start the excavation for the new addition. We expect the full demolition of that addition and the start of excavation by the end of November. With new plumbing and mechanical, again, the, the lower level, boys locker room and girls locker room are proceeding along as scheduled. It's just getting that, that bracing done on the back that's put the fieldhouse off a little bit. So as you can see, this is now the lower level, and this is where the new bathrooms are going. It's all been demoed, et cetera. And then we also had to relocate some ductwork going up through the gymnasium to provide heat during the construction of the addition. You'll see the demolition that's been done to this point where the roof is off. We've really only left the center portion of the existing addition, and that is to brace right now that back wall until, until we get it stabilized. And of course, they put up protection on the back wall as well, just to keep the, keep the weather out. The Salzman Academic Core East Addition, I will say. The survey and layout is complete. They, we've gone through the submittal process. We're still going through the steel, structural steel and windows and curtain walls, that type of shop drawing requirement to come in and be reviewed. Site clearing is now done. The trees have been removed between on both the east and the west in the areas of the additions. And the excavation has started for the east addition, for the footings and the columns and foundations. To look ahead, of course, we'll continue with the excavation of the east foundation, building the forms, et cetera. And then once we get the, once the rebar comes on-site, they'll start to put the rebar in, then we can pour the concrete, backfill, and then we can start with the building itself. On the west side, we will continue with the layout of the west addition. That's a little bit, was always meant to be a little bit further behind the east, so we're concentrating on getting the east on our site. People are walking through with, with Andy tomorrow to make a couple of changes where additional excavation will be taken out for some direction and fencing and barriers and that type of thing around the south end of the east addition. So we'll continue to move forward with that. As you can see, the trees are gone. Makes it pretty wide open at this point. The next, at the next point, the contractors will start to remove the soil and everything that's on, on the west side, that's on the rocks, so that they can get a better, better idea of exactly what it is they're going to be dealing with when we have to do excavation on the west side. This is, again, the excavation that has already started. You can see where they've already started to form for the foundation walls and columns. And it pretty much looks like a construction site now. I would expect this portion of the work to go on for another four or five weeks when we get back. I'm hoping that our next update, we'll be able to show you some concrete. That would be great. And also, in case, on the south side here of Salzman, you can see the emergency stair, the emergency egress stairs that were put up into place to exit, so students can go right out that back door up to the top of the hill and avoid being in the construction zone at all. Thank you. Any questions? It's really, it's really exciting. You can actually see it starting to shake.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
So is that the bracing of the south wall of the gymnasium, is that a change order? Or is that, was that anticipated, or is that something?
It was, it was not anticipated. It is stated that the contractor is, as part of their bid, supposed to include shoring and bracing of existing structures in order to do their work. But the reality is, we're still working with them to see, because some of this bracing will end up being a permanent piece of the building. We will not take it down. The verticals, we will eventually remove once the addition is on, but the bracing upon the trusses will not. That'll become a permanent part of the building. So we're still negotiating and getting pricing on that.
Any other questions?
Just to further clarify, the reason why some of the bracing has to remain, because the existing wall was not constructed as we had anticipated from looking at whatever was available from the original construction documents. What we found was, when the contractor started demolishing the wall, or the, the existing building, we had some voids in the existing exterior wall that's going to be embraced, or being braced. So we're going to have, we needed to take that into account when they were doing their shoring design. So that's what Robin's referring to. Some of it has to remain in place in order to sta, fully stabilize the wall, long-term.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
I'd like to ask about the capstones on the steps at GW. Can you tell me the story behind those?
Yes, the story behind the capstones. The masonry, the all-new masonry was put into place on both the gymnasium and the auditorium side of the cap, of the, of GW. When they had completed and set their capstones, it did not meet code for height. So what we ended up doing is having them remove the capstones, raise up to the proper height of masonry on both entrances, and then replacing the, the capstone itself.
And I noticed now the stainless steel is, the flashing is not there anymore.
It is not there. That was, yes, there was a, although I will say that, had the stainless steel been installed properly with the original design, the problem was, because it was so much lower than it was supposed to be, that when you put your hand on the rail, the capstone and the flashing underneath was closer than it should have been. And it wasn't crimped, for some reason. I don't know why, they, they left it as being a sharp edge. That's all been taken care of anyways. The design was changed when they repaired the walls.
So what was the, why wasn't it high enough in the first place? Was that an error on their part, or?
Was an error on their part, yes. They had to go in and repair it.
Anyway, I'm glad to see it was done the way it was, because, you know, I was, the way it was before with that flashing... way it was before with that flashing, you know, it was really an embarrassment to think that that was going to be like that for the next 65 years. That building is, I think, built in 1950, and so it's, you know, it looked pretty schlocky.
It certainly did. We're diligently working with the contractor to make sure that all the repairs are done correctly.
My question's not for Case Herbieville, it's more for Dr. Pedalino and administration, about now that construction's underway at the high school, and high school's in session. I've heard, I have heard a lot of delight that students are going to change for gym for a little while, but, let's change your shoes. But is there, how's it been going with the culture of the community? I mean, has it been disruptive, or has it been a hard transition at all, or?
Well, actually, we had Mr. Reinhardt here for our facilities committee meeting, and he said that he has not had complaints from teachers. I have, I met, I mean, I'm, my third meeting with Mrs. Nakarado since the, you know, the real, you know, kind of this real construction has started, and she has not brought any complaints to me from teachers at Kingston High School. So, I mean, as far as how people are moving forward and working with it, I think, I think there's a lot of, you know, I think Mr. Reinhardt's one concern was, so many kids really want to see what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, which is, which, hey, if that's their worst problem, we're in good shape. But as far as our faculty and staff and the working conditions, we have had no complaints.
If they're looking to see what's going, I mean, not that they care, not that students are going to want to read, but is there a way to provide pictures to them, to show them what's going on?
We are actually working, we're working with VBL and KSQ to find a way to get students not only, you know, to be able to see what's going on, but maybe get some students actively involved in what's going on, working at blueprints, working through things, maybe taking on some internship type of things. So we're working on making that happen over the course of the whole construction project.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any resolutions by trustees who would like to pull from the consent agenda? Did you have something like that?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought maybe I cut you off before you finished. All right. Is there any resolution, any member of the board would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Hearing nothing. I want to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Okay, discussion. All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Wonderful, thank you. And that brings us to the end of the consent agenda, and we're on to the Board of Education reports. Appears Facilities is up first. The Facilities Committee met this past Wednesday. We had several reports. First thing we did was vote on approval of the minutes from the June meeting, and they were approved unanimously, the people present. We had most people who were on the committee last year returning, with the exception possibly of one parent who hasn't committed to ask, but should be now hear from her soon. We'd be looking for replacements, and I would be accepting letters of interest. Mrs. Bauer? We had a report from Mr. Helgi on the progress of the five-year capital plan study. KSQ won the request for proposal for that, and they've begun. They've done a lot of inspections of buildings. They customarily do aerial photos. They do schematic drawings. If you take a look at the 2011 five-year facilities plan, you can see the kind of information we'll be getting. Of course, there have been changes since then. We've closed several buildings, and there have been roof repairs and all sorts of things which would, which should make for more glamorous photos this time around. We also had a report from Mr. Clapper on all the work that was completed over the summer, and I have to commend his staff. They did a tremendous amount of work in addition to all the cleaning and the, you know, regular maintenance, moving that they need to do. So I'm hoping that he'll get his report up online, so you can see all the work that was done in district by district personnel that contributed to the improved condition of our facilities. And then, lastly, we had a report from KSQ, and you saw what they were reporting to us at the last meeting, including the changes and the, holding the contractor at the GW building responsible for the stairs and the railings. And that was essentially at our next meeting is December the 2nd, and KSQ will be presenting a December 9th meeting for December. I think they're also presenting at the November 18th meeting, but December 9th is the only meeting we have in December. So if we're going to keep to the once-a-month presentation of the progress on the project, you're going to have, like, only a three-week leg in between. And coffee and conversation.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
Five-year capital plan, would that award, would that come to the board for approval?
It already did.
Where, was it in the?
No, 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 it was weeks ago. Coffee and Conversation was held for the first time at Barnes &amp; Noble. I had a very nice conversation with Mr. Charles Di Simone, who's the manager there, and he's very excited to have boards coming in. In fact, he was disappointed that I was all by myself, that I explained that you were at the NISPRA convention, you know, doing good work for the district, and that next time there would be more people. So he had tables all set up, several reserved for us were signed up, and he was very excited. And he was my only, yes. But I'm hoping that next time we'll have more. And I explained to him that this was a new venue for us. While it's not new to do coffee and conversation, this is a new venue, and I'm hoping that it will grow. And he's really excited about all of the fundraiser activities from our schools that are there, in addition to the next three, he kept telling me the dates for the next three coffee and conversations at Barnes &amp; Noble. So I would urge you to go, and it was, it was fun. You know, we had a very nice conversation. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Collins for Policy Committee.
Just a moment. When you just say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Our next coffee and conversation?
Yes, please.
Is next Wednesday, October 28th at 6:00 at the Riverview Baptist Church on Catherine Street.
I think there are four trustees signed up for that.
And Dr. Pedalino.
And Dr. Pedalino. So. And now I will turn it over to Mrs. Collins.
Good. Thank you. The Policy Committee met, again, we met last week after, well, we went to the convention on Friday, October 16th, and a good part of our meeting was spent on something that Mr. Olson had informed us about as far as a change in the state's fingerprinting regulations with our volunteer policy. Policy 1250 Tier III volunteers were required to be fingerprinted. That is now not the case. The state is no longer providing that service. It's not even a financial thing from what we had said, it's just something that they had stopped doing for volunteers. So we've been discussing that, just came up on Friday, running it by our lawyers. And with that said, and our administration, of course, tonight, we're going to propose, I'm going to put forth a resolution that we suspend fingerprinting, that part of the required volunteer policy, volunteer policy is 1250, until we have a reasonable alternative set forth by our attorneys. So can we do that now, just the appropriate time before we go home? So I will move that resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So can you just clarify, the policy still stands, it's just the Tier III that's being suspended?
Correct.
Or just the fingerprint?
Until we can.
And just the fingerprinting part of this tier?
I'll read that.
Mr. Perna has a resolution prepared by our legal team.
Be it resolved that the board hereby suspends that portion of Policy 1250 volunteers that requires fingerprinting of Tier III volunteers.
Okay. So we're still going to accept new volunteers in the T3, T3, shortened it, in Tier III position. But the reason why fingerprinting was put in place, for safety reasons, so I hope that we will be, still be very stringent in accepting those volunteers, because they are ones that are alone, those students.
Yes. So, our discussion.
Yes.
Absolutely, safety first.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the discussion on that will continue, and at future policy meetings. So all those in favor of BOE 33, as read by Ms. Perna, and moved and seconded. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, motion carries. And that's.
We also have a policy on here tonight, which is up for adoption. We had our first reading on it at our last meeting. It's policy 5150, student admissions. So I would like to move that one as well for adoption this evening.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay.
We'll have our next regularly scheduled meeting the first Friday, which I believe will be Friday, pardon me, November 7th.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Collins.
Thank you.
Old business. Is there any trustee who has old business that he or she would like to raise at this time? All right. I just have one bit of old business. The Multicultural Conference at New Pulse is being held on November the 13th. Our board has been invited to attend, and applications have to be to Mr. Perna by the 30th of October. So it's November 13th at New Pulse. It's a full-day conference, and the application has all the information about the hours. Any other old business? New business? Okay. We do have one bit of new business. The Commissioner of Education is coming to New Pulse on December the 8th, and Dr. Pedalino has some details.
Well, the Commission of Education will be visiting Ulster County, spending some time in the morning with superintendent. She's got a very aggressive and ambitious day planned, but part of that day, which is at from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, that late that day, the early evening, she would like to have a conversation with Board of Education members. We've been told from our BOSIs, we'll be allowed to send three Board of Education members to Ulster BOSIs to meet with the commissioner and hear and talk with her. Again, it's an hour, you know, so you're looking at a lot of people in a room for an hour, but, so we have three, three spots, I guess. And if anybody, I would like to know if anybody's interested, if they would just maybe email Camille, so we can make some, I can get back to Mr. or Dr. Coria, who will be attending from our board. And actually, maybe if we could take a quick straw poll right now, are there people that think they can go? Because if we're going to have more than three, maybe we need to make some decisions on how we want to do that.
December 8th, it's a Tuesday evening, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m.
December 8th.
Sorry.
December the 8th. And again, I know it's, you know, it's a month and a half away. You're looking at that.
Okay, Ruben Shaw? Yes, you're looking. I can do it.
Can I ask about the parents, she's inviting parents to?
We have, yeah, we have identified groups. There's several different groups we're looking for. They're looking for parents, board members, program administrators, and teachers.
Is it the same kind of setup? It's an hour?
Same kind of setup, hour.
Three people from each group?
Right. So we're allowed three from each. So again, you know, as far as the teacher's concerned, I've put that, I've asked Mrs. Nakarado to handle that for us. We're going to send our, you know, our assistant superintendents and assistant superintendents at the program level, myself at the superintendent level, and then, like I said, we have three board members, and then we're going to reach out to our, to our building principals to get parent involvement.
Yes, Mrs. Collins. Oh, you're volunteering.
We don't have three. Well, I mean, we're a couple of us at.
All right.
Well, I'd like to, I'll see if I can get on through the BOSIs board.
All right, BOSIs has a, BOSIs has a lot, but it's free as well.
Okay.
I'm unavailable at night. I thought you were looking at me for an answer.
Oh, no, no.
You were looking at me, saying I'm unavailable at night.
Just wanted to make sure I looked that way.
Kathy and Ruben Shaw.
Yes, three. Right?
That's what I was going to say, right? You know, being parents to whatever.
That's what you're probably with, is also a parent, so.
That's how much.
We might be able to do it that way. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other piece of new business. If I can just, it's not really new business, but in your packet, you received a flyer for Rapsody and Black at U-PAC on the 27th this year. That flyer, if you didn't get one, we'll get you one. If you didn't get a paper packet, maybe that, but if you didn't get one, we'll get you one. That flyer actually is a, is a free pass into that show for two people on the 27th at 7:00 o'clock. Rapsody and Black was the show that was put on for our teachers for the first day of school, and actually for our students on the 27th, right? This is the 29th, right? This is why, I'm sorry, this is the 29th. Our students are seeing it on the 27th, which is a really powerful, you know, presentation using the arts, talking about diversity and race, and really was well-received by our teachers and our administrators at Kingston High School. It's worth, it's worth the time to go see it, and now you have free passes if you have the opportunity on the 29th.
October 29th?
October 29th, yes. You're welcome, you're welcome to come to Kingston High School on October 27th if you would like to see it, but you'll be sitting with a bunch of ninth and 10th graders, so just letting you know.
So Camille, you have those?
I don't, I, that's the first I'm seeing.
They came in asking, like, you were out there.
Do you want to keep it to your color?
They were sent to us? Is that?
They were, oh, no, I'm sorry. Kay Churchill from the Bardavon gave these to give to board members.
Okay.
Carol probably, Carol Bell might have them. Because I, that's who I handed them to.
Okay. Any other new business? Any other new business? Board member announcements.
I have one. For the first time, since my tenure on the board, I did not receive a package.
Really?
No.
I'm not a very good clerk of the board, I'm sorry. I guess that was my, that was my, that was my error.
Mr. Perna, we said, for a good day, so apologies.
That's all right. No, I just want.
I apologize for that.
It was emailed, though. It was emailed.
You know, I had written down, there were a couple of paper packets, I don't know how, I don't know how I missed you. I apologize.
Sorry. Board member announcements? Yes, Mr. Helgi.
Well, I'd like to, just make, I've been haunted this month since, you know, I found out about the suicide of the young girl down in New Pulse, Maya Gold, 15-year-old girl who committed suicide on October 2nd. And there's been articles in Kingston Times, I believe, and the eulogy that Rabbi Pliger gave at SUNY New Pulse, 800 people at the funeral. You know, just to stress the importance of social, emotional health of our students, of our children. You know, this was a young, a young girl, a young lady who seemed to have, you know, a vivid path, an extraordinary path ahead of her. She had been in, there was a picture I saw somewhere, she was in India, and she had gone there with a group and was with a, volunteered at a rural school somewhere in India. So it's just, you know, it's, I think that we just need to be, you know, we all need to be both, we all need to be aware of the importance of observing our children and students and making sure that they're on, you know, trying to identify potential problems, or potential situations that might result in something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Helgi. I have an announcement this year, bringing all the board meetings back to Sione Building and inviting the. to Sione Building and inviting the schools to come in and provide a connection for the board to what's going on in the schools. We've also invited board members to visit the schools. So October 28th, next Wednesday, is, it's the fourth Wednesday of the month. I want to let you know that schools will be available for the trustees to come and visit, but you still are bound by the policies to notify both the principals of the schools you intend to visit and Dr. Padalino, to let you know that he'll be there. But please do, feel free to visit and enjoy and explore the culture of the buildings. Any other announcement? Which brings us back to that portion of the meeting where we welcome public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point? Please come forward. Okay, hearing no one? I'm sorry, Mrs. Prindle? You do? This is Mrs. Prindle.
Um, hi. I am Mrs. Prindle. And, sorry about me because it's been a rotten day. My daughter reported bowling at the high school. I just was informed by my husband because I was banned from going to the games. There's a lot to go with this. But I was just told that my daughter did not play at all tonight. She has never not played. The coach did not let her play at all because she reported and is backing a girl up. And I just think you need to be aware. This, Mrs. Armstrong said that it was not good enough to look into bowling because I think it could end up in a suicide position. And I think it's wrong. I was going to talk about, not talk at all, but when he spoke, I was like, you know what, I'm going to talk. Because my daughter's trying to stand on what's right, and she just got negated. And she's still going to stand on what's right. But she needs someone to have her back, and Glenn Maysh doesn't have her back.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Since there's no need for second executive session, I'll, if you're team, a motion to adjourn.
So move?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.